Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, September 21st, 2016. At this time, we ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of the following residents who passed away since our last meeting. Jeremiah Cotrell, Louise Perry, and Christine Lavery.
First on the agenda tonight, approval of our minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of August 31st and the regular meeting of September 14th be approved.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. Next, we'll approve the warrants for the week.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 12A-17 and the amount of $81,303.64 payroll. Warrant 12B-17 and the amount of $294,570.23 and warrant 12C-17 and the amount of $1,108.31. The last two being accounts payable be approved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. Correspondence. We have a piece of correspondence from our town clerk, Sue Maderas, regarding early voting here in Dayton. This is a letter that was sent to the Elections Division in Boston. It reads, Dear Secretary of State Galvin, the Town of Dayton Board of Selectmen, along with the town clerk, has designated the Dayton Town Hall, lower level, 979 Somerset Ave., Dayton, Massachusetts, as the official voting site for early voting in Dayton. Hours are as follows for the dates October 24th through November 3rd. Again, those dates, October 24th through November 3rd, 2016. The Dayton Town Hall is not open on Fridays. The hours on October 24th, 25th, 26th, 24th, 25th will be 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. October 26th, which is a Wednesday, 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The 27th of October, October 31st, November 1st, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. November 2nd, which is a Wednesday, 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And November 3rd, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. So with the exception of Wednesdays, early voting will take place 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And on those Wednesdays, it will be 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. In addition, we certify that the Dayton Town Hall, lower level, complies with the accessibility regulations set forth in 950 Commonwealth Mass. Regulations 51-00. If you should need additional information, please contact Sue Maderas, Dayton Town Clerk, respectfully, Dayton Board of Selectmen Dean V. Cronin, Brett Ozdogravos, and Nancy J. Goulart. So ladies and gentlemen, be the first to engage in the new state policy of early voting. Next on the agenda, announcements. Tonight's announcements are trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Dayton Board of Selectmen's office. You may call 508-669-6431 for more information. There will be a flu shot clinic tomorrow, September 22nd, at 10 a.m. to noon time. This will be held in the lower level of Dayton Town Hall. You must be 18 years of age or older and bring your insurance cards. If you have any questions, please contact Tiffany Lopes at 508-676-3370. These shots are provided by Rite Aid Pharmacy and is being hosted by the Dayton Council on Aging. Associates for Human Services will hold a spaghetti supper at St. Nicholas of Myra on Friday, September 23rd, at 5:00 p.m., followed by a raffle at 6:30 p.m. Tickets are $10 for adults, $7 for seniors, and $5 for children. Please call 508-880-0202 for tickets or further information. This is a busy week. The food bank distribution will take place on Saturday, September 24th, from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. Meetings for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health are now being posted to YouTube under the name Town of Dayton Meetings. The Historical Commission is looking for volunteers. Please come into the Selectmen's office to fill out a volunteer form if you are interested. The Fall Town Meeting will be held on Thursday, October 27th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Dayton Middle School. Articles for the Fall Town Meeting are due Thursday, September 22nd, that's tomorrow, by 3:00 p.m. There are currently unused items located at the transfer station available to the highest bidder. Please submit written bids for these items at the Selectmen's office on or before September 29th at 3:00 p.m. These items are a Dayton portable generator, a John Deere lawnmower, model L11A, and an arc welder, which is located at the Highway Department. If you wish to take a look at them, take a ride either to the transfer station or the Highway Department. If for any reason you'd like to throw a bid in on them, feel welcome to do so.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to old business, I wanted to ask Selectmen Goulart, did you want to make any remarks regarding our fun time that we had at Spirit of Somerset?
Oh, I've got another one. You can do that one.
Okay.
I have one announcement. I just want to extend congratulations from the town to the Associates for Human Services. This week, they celebrated the 40th anniversary of the Early Intervention Program, and that was here on Tuesday. It was held in the Lions Pavilion, and there was a very good turnout of local officials, a number of them from Tonton, including the mayor, and also a number of families with small children. So congratulations for 40 years of operating a very successful early intervention program.
I got to see my friend Andy Howell in there. It was nice. I just wanted to thank the Town of Somerset and the Somerset Board of Selectmen for inviting us all to the Spirit of Somerset event last Saturday. Nancy Selectmen-Goulart, excuse me, and I went. We had a great time. They gave us a free clam boil dinner from Little Audrey's. It was amazing. And Selectmen-Goulart doesn't even really like steamers, and she ate them. I can attest to that. But it was just really nice, and we really appreciated that sense of camaraderie with our neighbor. So we will continue that, too.
It was a very large event. It was at the town waterfront park, and they had to run shuttles from various parking lots. And this is not the music program that comes up in September, excuse me, October, that the school has. This is a town celebration. So it was, I agree, it was very, very nice. And the clams were really good, Dean.
You missed out.
It's my sixth year, I've never been to one. Old business. Do we have any old business tonight?
We have no old business.
No old business. How about new business? First on the agenda, review, discuss an act on the appointment of a full-time police officer. At this time, I'd like to call on our chief, Robert McDonald. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd feel amiss if I did not say this. This beautiful podium that was built by Bristol Plymouth Regional High School for the use of Dayton functions and what have you, you are looking at the proud individual who was the first one ever to use that podium.
I did.
And we caught him trying to carve his initials into it. And we had to stop him and call for assistance.
I have to say, when the first time he came up, the first one here, I thought this thing was very nice. This is a beautiful podium, I gotta tell you. But anyways, good evening.
We just want you to know at the Board of Health meeting, somebody else who stood there tonight talked about carving initials, and we warned them, no, somebody's already attempted that.
I won't do that. But good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to talk about a few things with the Police Department and regular full-time patrolmen. The first thing is, last month or so in the station, myself and the sergeants were looking into doing some job tasks for different officers in the department. And we came up with four of them, and one of them was the school resource officer that we have somebody up there. He was there last year, but the officer that was there last year, he went on to another job. The other one was assistant field training officer, a part-time investigator, and a firearms training officer. We proposed to these jobs, and the officers, or if they were interested in it, they could bid for the job. And I had people, a lot of people, a lot of officers were interested in this. And after they applied for it and went through them and talked to the sergeant and felt that, you know, who we thought was a good choice to do these jobs, and I'm just gonna tell you who got the jobs tasked. The resource officer is Chris McGann. He is now the resource officer at the Dayton Rehoboth High School. He's up there now. He replaced Pat McCarthy, who left the department for another job. The other job is assistant field training officer, which is patrolman James Duddy. Jimmy will have to go to a field training school, and he'll assist Sergeant Cronin, who is our field training officer now. The part-time investigator is Ryan, Patrolman Ryan Richards. Ryan accepted that. I think Ryan's gonna do a great job of that. And the fourth one is the firearms training officer, Patrolman Greg Steele. He took that position. He also attended already a two-week firearm school, and he passed with no problems. So those four officers now have a task in these jobs. I think it's good for our department, and hopefully it'll work for us down the road. Second thing is, we had someone leaving our department. Of course, I told you, it was Pat McCarthy. He went on to another field. We did some interviews a couple of months, month and a half ago. We had good people that interviewed. After we interviewed them, we came up to a decision with the sergeant and the patrolman interviewed. And this officer here has been with the department since January of 2013. He's done his time. He works when you call upon him.
That doesn't sound good.
What has he done since he's been out?
But no, he was a good choice. Like I said, he's been here since 2013. He has passed the PAT. He's passed the physical. He's passed his psych test. So my recommendation to the board is, I'd like to recommend Todd Kazuski to full-time to the Dayton Police Department.
First, before I entertain a motion, Chief, great job on these. I think this is a big step, you know, getting some of the young men involved in different tasks and spreading it around a little.
Yep.
I think it's a great thing, boost morale and get a little more camaraderie and what have you. So good job on that.
Thank you.
And second, well, excellent choice here.
Yes.
So at this point, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation.
Already?
Recommendation from Chief Robert McDonald to appoint a new patrolman, Todd Kazuski.
So moved.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say, we read a lot of papers here, a lot of papers across our desk, as you can imagine, but I do remember your file. You definitely stood out, so I'm happy to hear that Chief recommended you for hire, and we're honored to have you. So thank you.
I think we have Todd stand up, talk a little about yourself and about the department.
We better point him first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
He might say something wrong. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries unanimously.
You'll become number 38.
Congratulations, Todd.
Now you get to go to the podium.
And he will be starting this Sunday.
Ooh.
First day, so he'll be starting Sunday.
We'll be on the lookout.
So he'll be starting then. We already got our schedule out. His first day will be Sunday. He'll be working midnight date.
Yeah, I guess so. Well, again, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you for it, because about three years ago now, I was appointed part-time, and I moved to the town approximately six, seven years ago now. And prior to that, I had applied. And so, not realizing that I'd get on by the time I moved here, it's just been, it's been an honor and a privilege to live in town. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve in town. And I'll just be really brief, but I look forward to continuing my service in the capacity of a full-time patrolman. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to many years of honorable service.
At this time, our town clerk, Sue Maderas, will swear at Todd, I mean swear him in.
I'm gonna swear out. Want to reach you right in, please. Todd, you solemnly swear that you look faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as an appointed police officer in the Town of Dayton, according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Mass. and the bylaws of the Town of Dayton. So I hope you're all right.
I do.
I just want to make one comment. I do make little quirky statements or anything, but I know these people very well, so I can get away with it. And I have to sign their checks anyway.
And now that you're official, before you leave, check that. If there's anything carved in it.
You know, you gave me an idea. I didn't think of that, but I might do it. Thank you, board.
You've been publicly warned.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations, Todd. Our second agenda item under new business, review, discuss an act to approve the award of trash bag bids.
Mr. Chairman, at the Board of Health meeting earlier tonight, we reviewed the four bids that were received, and the Board of Health voted to award the contract to provide trash bags to the town, two, tags, bags, and containers. And the low price that they bid was $29.50 per case for the small, clear bags, printed in black with the Dayton logo, and $46.25 for the larger bags. And we are going to go with the wave tie bags as opposed to us having the twist ties in the past. Why make a motion that we award that bid to tags, bags, and containers?
I will second that motion.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries unanimously. The last item under new business, review, discuss an act on an Eagle Scout project presented by Noah Avila. Good evening, Mr. Avila.
Good evening.
How are you today?
Mr. Chairman, I am very good. So tonight, I am here to present my proposal for a multipurpose trail at the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional High School. So I want to start by passing each of you out your very own proposal.
Are we getting our own?
So there's two proposals there. One I am required to supply you with is the Boy Scouts of America proposal, and the top one is my proposal with more information. So if you would open up to page three, I would like to start with the intended use. I think that's pretty important. So the trail is obviously gonna be at the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional High School, and it's gonna have three main uses. The first is by the students, the second is by the community, and the third is by the CTE environmental program. So right now at the high school, there is no trail in place for either students or the community to use. So we have a program at the high school, I'm sure you're aware of, is the environmental CTE and other science classes. So currently, if any of the classes need to go and view a nature trail, they have to transport the students off-site. So creating this trail would allow for a local observation of the nature and the ecosystem. The second main point I'd like to make is that we're going for a very low-impact trail. So the design is gonna be a four-foot tread with about a foot on either side just to clear the brush, so no one gets hit by the briars or trees. And the second is, the trail is gonna be a third of a mile long. Also included in your packet is this little map that pretty much shows you where the start is. It starts up at the top left-hand corner of the senior lot and ends at the top right-hand corner of the soccer field, and it goes all the way around. Other than that, the trail is gonna be made by removing all of the grasses, shrubs, stones, and then we're gonna rake the leaves off the tread and have a pretty sustainable, low-impact trail. The last thing I'd like to note is that last Sunday, the Rehoboth, I had the Rehoboth Conservation Commission there, and they walked the trail with me and gave it the go. So I'm gonna be presenting to them probably and having them sign that off.
Noah, how long did you say that trail was?
The trail was a third of a mile, or approximately 1,800 feet.
Is the property in Rehoboth public or private?
That is public property, I believe. It's owned by the town, I can tell you that. I'm not really sure how that works.
Okay. So is it the town or is it the regional district?
From what my understanding is, is it's the town's.
Okay. I had a question on page three, down the accessibility. The trail will not be ABA accessible. Do you mean ADA? Americans with Disabilities Act?
I think that's what it is, yeah.
All right, just make the B into a D, okay? Because when I looked at that, I thought, I think he means ADA.
Yeah, I was gonna try and aim for that initially, but because of all the glacial rocks, it's just actually impossible to do it without, like, blast mining or something.
Nice presentation. Very nicely done.
What will the trail tread actually be made out of?
So the trail tread is actually gonna be made of the topsoil. So all we're gonna be doing is removing, like, the wet leaves and stuff for the four-foot wide trail and pushing those off to the side in the one-foot cleared zone. So it's gonna be made up of the topsoil.
Is it gravelly as opposed to loom?
It's kind of like a pine needle-y sort of thing, and then over time, it'll fill in naturally as people walk over it.
Compact? Are there any low areas that get wet?
There are no low areas.
That's good.
Very good.
From when I walked it and when the Rehoboth Conservation Commission walked it, the entire trail was in compliance with state and town bylaws.
Okay. Are there any indications where, when you cross from Dayton into Rehoboth on the trail? Or will there be any kind of a marker or anything?
At the top part of the field, there is actually a stone wall.
Okay.
So that is a little indication. As for the lower half, there's really no indication.
In the bottom left, bottom right corner of the drawing, is that the school I'm looking at?
That is the senior lot.
Oh, okay.
Market Lot.
Okay. What is this light-colored bluish-green thing, area?
So that represents wetlands.
Okay.
So that's why I have, you see in that purply color, the distance, that one that says 96 feet, it's actually a little longer, but the map's kind of un, like, not very accurate.
Have the school officials been out on the trail?
Yes, Mr. Braga has been out there, the school principal, and he has approved of it.
Okay. Who's your advisor for this project?
My advisor is Mrs. Jaeger, the environmental teacher at the high school, and then also Mr. Braga, who's been kind of guiding me through the process.
What about your troop?
My troop, it would be my scoutmaster, Michael Cadero.
Oh, you're troop three?
Troop three, yes.
Okay.
There are no low areas.
That's good. Very good.
From when I walked it and when the Rehoboth Conservation Commission walked it, the entire trail was in compliance with state and town bylaws.
Are there any indications where when you cross from Dayton into Rehoboth on the trail? Or will there be any kind of a marker or anything?
At the top part of the field, there is actually a stone wall.
Okay.
So that is a little indication. As for the lower half, there's really no indication.
In the bottom left, bottom right corner of the drawing, is that the school I'm looking at?
That is the senior lot.
Oh, okay.
Park and lot.
What is this light-colored bluish-green thing, area?
So that represents wetlands.
Okay.
So that's why I have, you see in that purply color, the distance, that one that says 96 feet, it's actually a little longer, but the map's kind of, like, not very accurate.
Have the school officials been out on the trail?
Yes, Mr. Braga has been out there, the school principal, and he has approved of it.
Who's your advisor for this project?
My advisor is Mrs. Jaeger, the environmental teacher at the high school, and then also Mr. Braga, who's been kind of guiding me through the process.
What about your troop?
My troop, that would be my scoutmaster, Michael Cudero.
Oh, you're troop three?
Troop three, yes.
Will there be a sign indicating where the trail begins? Notice, if I go up there, will I be able to find it?
Yes, yes you will. There will be a bench at the end. We'd like to have, like, maybe a few benches at the start, and then signage going all the way through.
Okay.
Because this is only, like, the first part of the trail. As according to, like, the DR athletics, like, expansion thing, there's actually gonna be more trails in here, but I'm not gonna be doing that.
I think I can handle 1,800 feet. I know when I started out on the Broad Cove Trail, it just kept going out further as I walked, getting longer. My husband kept saying, it's not much farther. I used to hunt here. It's like a mile down and a mile back.
A little bit of a hike.
Any snakes?
No, the snake I thought I saw was actually a hose. I couldn't blame that on Todd.
You could.
I thought I really had something, but it was a garden hose. But it was green.
Now, once there's any other questions, again, very nice job, you know, doing this presentation for us.
Well, the other thing, I'm not sure when you would do this, but I would need
Signature.
The signatures on this form.
So have you already started, or are you in the fundraising? Where are you with this?
Right. It's actually not gonna really take a lot of funds, so we just finished up, or I finished up the planning phase. So right now, I'm going through and trying to recruit people to actually help with the entire process.
To clear it and rake it and do all that good stuff?
All the fun stuff.
So have you managed to recruit your father and brothers?
They are recruited, I think.
Noah is one of the team members that goes to Honduras. How many times have you been to Honduras?
This last year was my third time.
Third time. He goes down there and helps set that, where the Dominican Sisters are. So you must be used to working with hand tools and picks and shovels.
Yeah, I am.
Rudimentary tools. Let's put it that way.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we tentatively approve the Eagle Scout project, the nature trail, a walking trail, excuse me, at Dayton Rehoboth, with the understanding we will have a progress report midway and a final report.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Passes unanimously. You want me to sign this beneficiary approval? Well, Noah, congratulations and best luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. February. Thank you.
If you have any questions or need anything, you know, just give us a holler or give Mr. February a call, or anything we can help you with, we'd be glad to.
Thank you very much.
Either way, you were number 39.
Keep it written down.
Yes, because if you come back, you don't get a new number, so you better know your number.
You max out.
Do we have any reports?
Oh.
I don't. Any acknowledgements?
No contributions this week, Carrie?
No.
My goodness.
The world ran dry.
Things are slowing down.
Public input.
No public input.
Do you want to say something? Okay.
He's all done.
He got what he wanted.
In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And I will happily second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Don't forget, we have the food bank, we have Saturday, we have
Food clinic tomorrow.
Food clinic tomorrow.
Psychic fair.
Psychic fair coming up. It's a busy rest of the week, and no clamboils, but thank you all for being with us tonight. I'll see you next week, and thank you cable.